Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. If you are so inclined, please feel to stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board, I welcome all members of the audience to this evening's meeting. This is a meeting of a working session of the Board to conduct the business of the district. The agenda for today's meeting has been published, and the agenda items to be discussed and/or voted on have been studied by the Board members. I would like to introduce the people participating in this meeting. Recording Secretary Peggy King, Superintendent Mr. Michael Tolly, Board Members Amy Cast, Bob Swain, Sandy Hayes, and David Cogan. I'm Jackie McGurty, and I currently serve as President of the Board. An agenda for this meeting is available online at boarddocs.com, and copies are also located on the table at the back of the boardroom. There will be an opportunity for both virtual and in-person public comments to be shared during the Association and Public Comment portion of the meeting. Community members who are interested in viewing the meeting with closed captions are encouraged to follow the link on our website to the district's YouTube channel. The YouTube stream includes closed captioning for both regular board meetings and study sessions. Visit nsd.org and under our district, click School Board, then Board Meeting Materials and Videos. If you are here to address the Board on Agenda Items, please sign in using the sign-in sheet on the table at the back of the room and take a number which corresponds with the line where you signed in. First order of business tonight is the land acknowledgement. Oh, and I guess that's me tonight. We take this time to acknowledge that the North Shore School District occupies the unceded coast-salish lands that have been here since time immemorial. We honor the ways of knowing and ways of being of indigenous peoples and tribal nations who are still here and thriving in our district community. We also acknowledge that this is a working land acknowledgement that will continue to evolve as our partnership with local indigenous peoples and tribal leaders expands. Next up, we have approval of the agenda. Would anyone on the Board like to make any changes to the agenda as published? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as published? So moved.
Second vote.
Then I call for the vote. And the agenda is approved. Thank you. Next up, we have the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Tolly?
Thank you, President McGurty. Over the past two weeks since the last school board meeting, I have been, of course, busy attending and participating in numerous meetings and school visits. Some examples include, on Tuesday, October 10th, I made a surprise visit to Timbercrest Middle School to recognize art teacher Karen Goodrow for being selected as the Washington State Middle Level Art Teacher of the Year. I attended the school board visit to East Ridge Elementary School on Tuesday, October 10th, as well. I attended the Staff of Color Coalition meeting on Wednesday, October 11th, and I also attended a conversation with the Board, which was a joint meeting between the North Shore Council PTA and the school board last week, Tuesday, October 17th. We held the Muslim Family Listen and Learn event here in the boardroom last week, Wednesday, October 18th, and I provided a State of the District presentation to the Woodinville Chamber of Commerce meeting last week, Thursday, October 19th. I have continued to conduct school-level Strategic Action Plan reviews with school principals and several of their thought partners. Over the last two weeks, we've conducted Strategic Action Plan reviews at Canyon Creek and Woodmore Elementary Schools, Skyview and Leota Middle Schools, as well as Woodinville High School. I also conducted a formal school visit to Wellington Elementary School. This concludes my reports for this evening.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Okay. Next up is Association and Public Comments. The North Shore School District Board of Directors has set aside a period of up to 60 minutes to receive updates and comments from association leaders and community members. The Board expects all parties addressing the Board to present their comments in a way that is civil and respectful. Please speak directly to the Board and address matters related to district operations, policies, procedures, and agenda items under consideration by the Board. Comments should not make reference to any employee or representative of the district by name or by identifiable reference. There is a complaint process available for that through the office of the Superintendent, if you are interested. Washington state law requires that only items on a previously published agenda be discussed at a board meeting. Any new topics brought up during public comment will either receive a later response from a district employee or a board member or be discussed at a future board meeting. So first up, we will have association members, please. And everyone who comes to the podium, please introduce yourself before providing comments.
Good reminder. Thank you. Thank you, Board, for having me. My name is Holly Munchow. I'm the co VP of North Shore Council PTA, and we have a couple of updates. So first of all, I want to thank everyone who attended our Be Smart Parent Education for Gun Safety Seminar, and a special thank to Jaclyn Condra for leading that, who's also a local PTA member. Hopefully, we can help our community be safer. We, last weekend, had our Legislative Assembly. It was very productive. North Shore was almost the top school district in sending delegates. We had 19. We were second. And 11 from representing 11 different PTAs, and we had four from council. I wanted to share you a quick update on what we passed. We passed a new legislative issue supporting multi- and heritage language education for all. We updated our legislative issue preventing and reducing gun violence and suicide with two points: expanding existing law to prohibit firearms where families and youth congregate in public spaces, and restoring local government authority to enhance state firearm regulations to protect children and youth. We retired some old resolutions and made new resolutions in their place, and they were in support of a couple key issues: a diverse and effective education workforce, high-quality preschool to third-grade early learning, K-12 education funding, and preventing traumatic brain injuries. And we updated two resolutions, the first one being social-emotional learning and student success, where we added calls for state and federal funding to support SEL learning and staffing to meet students' SEL needs like psychologists, counselors, family and community engagement coordinators, social workers, speech-language pathologists, behavior specialists, and nurses. Hopefully, we'll get that funding. And we also updated our resolutions for substance use disorder education and prevention, so that we changed our language to encompass all cannabis and tobacco products. We acknowledged the impact of the opioid overdoses in our community and advocated for overdose reversal medication to be available in all schools, and also reflecting new data available from the Healthy Use Survey, which is kind of exciting to be able to use that. And then we also have some fun events coming up soon. Tomorrow, we have council office hours from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. On the 26th, we have the Principals and Presidents Lunch, and we'll be happy to see you all there. On the 27th is the due date for educational speakers and community grants, so if anybody wants some of that, reach out. And then, of course, the 7th is Election Day, so get your ballots in. In fact, my ballot has already arrived, so hopefully, your all has shown up in your mailbox, and you can get them in. And then, on the 14th, we have Council General Meeting, and we've sent out a call looking for nominating committee volunteers. So if anybody would like to join us and join the nominating committee, we would love you to volunteer. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Holly. Next up, in associations?
Colleen Ponto, Board Trustee, Cascadia College. I'm here to provide an update. So our enrollment increased 10% over last year, so we're really... I'm adding some words. We're really excited about that. Huge gains in international running start and career in college foundations. For North Shore School District, some running start stats. Total running start is up 16%. North Shore School District running start students make up 51% of the total at Cascadia. More than 350 students from North Shore School District. Bothell High School, 121; Englemore, 83; North Creek, 80; and Woodinville, 77. That means we are well on our way to recovering from the pandemic. We attribute this to a change in societal attitude towards higher education, availability of in-person classes, increased advising and financial support of our students, and improved outreach methods. Our foundation supported our students last year with more than $400,000. We appreciate those of you who help us achieve that goal each year, and we will be bringing invitations to future events during this year. Innovation Hall, our new STEM building, in partnership with Udubothel, opens on January 2nd for classes, and the grand opening is November 16th. And finally, our college president, Eric Murray, will be here November 13th to deliver a brief State of the College address. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any other association leaders? Okay. Then I believe we have one virtual public comment. If they are ready, then please go ahead and introduce yourself and provide your comment.
Good evening. Good evening. I am Linda Sadam, a grandmother of two elementary boys in a North Shore school. I appreciate that as a school board members, you're often told that one thing or another is the most important issue you need to focus on. I understand that you are elected with your own experiences and beliefs, and the reward for service is to be pulled in many directions. And I'm warning you, I am no different. I was curious to see that my grandsons and their friends would say when asked what they thought of art and art classes in their school. The four boys, age range 7 to 10, were very verbal and strong in their responses. They all liked art. They all thought they were good at art, and they all wanted more art. A 10-year-old said that they liked how they felt while doing art, and it didn't matter whether others saw it or not. A 7-year-old said they did not get enough art in school, that art helped them relax and get energy. Art is a creative process that, as I noted when I addressed this group last year, teaches a way to communicate. It is a language, an expression of and by each individual. While leading a discussion group of young adolescents in Ohio based on the book Reviving Ophelia by Mary Pippin in the late 1990s, a young teen noted that it was her hobbies, her art, that had saved her. She commented that all her friends had found something they could do out of school that became a hobby, a safe space for them to explore and grow. Without her exposure to art in school, she would not have found her safe space, as art was not part of her family. You and our schools are asked to do many things. At times, it must feel like the schools and teachers must not only address, but also solve all the problems and issues our young people are facing. I'm suggesting that art education, creating a safe space to learn and practice art that's led by professionals, is actually equipping and empowering our young students. And that, I think we can all agree, is our job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well now move to the in-person list. I will go down the number here. When I call your number, please come and introduce yourself and then provide your comment. Number one?
Hi. I would like to address the safety in the schools. My name is Yossi Rosenbaum. I've got three kids in the North Shore School District. I'm Jewish. I'm from Israel. I'm also the grandson of Chava. She was a short, energetic, witty woman who was born in Grodno, a small town in East Poland. When the Nazis came to power, she started spreading their Jew-ating agenda. She realized she has no future in this place. At age 14, she boarded a boat to Chaiifa, hoping that her family will join her soon. That never happened. Her entire family was murdered by the Nazis. Growing up with Holocaust stories around me, I could never understand how such diabolical hate spreads. I think that today, I understand it a little bit more. After the worst attack on Jews since the Holocaust, the vicious terror attack by Hamas, it took haters exactly two hours to start denying what happened and then start to blame the victim, and then celebrating the death of our kids in social media posts and parades. We are seeing what is happening around us on the streets of Seattle, in the campus of Udub, and in other places. We are seeing what is happening through social media in schools around us. I can hear the chants getting closer and closer to me. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free, from Jews, of course. I'm sharing that with you because I'm afraid. I'm afraid that my kids will be silenced. I'm afraid that one day, they will come back from school, and instead of the joyful, naive face, I'm going to see something else. I'm going to see a dead, fearful look in their eyes, like someone turned off the light. I'm afraid that my kids will get attacked because of their identity. And they would look at me with their big eyes, asking me something that I will never be able to explain. Why? Why do they hate us so much? I'm also sharing that with you because I am hopeful. I'm hopeful because I see the good and kindness in our community, and mostly, I'm hopeful because I truly believe that the key to eradicate antisemitism and hatefulness is for education. I know that if we work together and make it a priority for our kids, for all of the kids, we will be safer, our community will be more resilient, and we will come out stronger. And so I urge you, and I ask you, to put together a plan to fight antisemitism and to put together a plan to fight hate in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Number two?
Hello. My name is Allegra Hollenbeck. I live in Bothell. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I have two kids, a second grader and a kindergarten at Maywood Hills Elementary. I'm here to express my support for making visual arts part of the elementary school regular curriculum instruction throughout the school year. Having visual arts taught by qualified art teachers is essential for our children's development in self-expression, emotional processing, brain development, creativity, communication, enhancement of other learning activities, and many other domains of neurocognitive development. I want to share a bit of my experience as an art docent last year in my son's first-grade classroom. I had a lot more time to devote to teaching in the art docent program since I was a stay-at-home mom at the beginning of last school year. I was an art docent for my son's class and for his best friend's first-grade class, since they needed a volunteer as well. It was very rewarding. The kids were so excited to have art. Many of them came up to me telling me how much they love art. I felt like a rock star. But I also felt the frustration of not being able to give them what they really needed, a consistent artistic expert who had knowledge and the time to teach them more in depth. I came in about once a month to art docent. I got about 30 to 45 minutes to do the lesson, because that's all the teachers' schedules could spare. I remember trying to schedule and make up time with one teacher, but the availability was limited because they had their specialist at that time. This got me thinking. Why isn't there a visual arts specialist? Students need space and time for creativity. Isn't this why Bill 5878 was introduced in the first place? I had more time on my hands to volunteer at the beginning of the year, and I was growing more and more unavailable as I entered the workforce. I can only imagine the challenges that the art docent program has in communities with parents who don't have the luxury to take off work. We want to be equitable, but the art docent program does not seem to be the right approach for achieving accessibility. I know that we have dedicated specialists already, and I realize that physical education and music are absolutely essential. Visual art is also essential, but in a different way, and something our young students need to have access to, especially after living through a pandemic and being subjected to the traumas that we're experiencing globally. Some students do not have words to express their emotions. Some do not have an outlet to be free to discover their inner voice. With visual art, they can engage in a process where they are safe to make mistakes, where they can plan, grow, and learn in a way where they aren't earning a score on a task, but contributing to their community and building their self-worth through the creative process. I see many clients in my therapy sessions who don't believe they have anything significant to say or to contribute, who say they just aren't that creative. I see their inner children longing for a way to say, "Please see me. Please understand." Who knows where they would be in their process had they had tools as a child to create? We have no time to waste making visual arts a dedicated part of our curriculum. Let's show that NSD is truly an outstanding district that provides children all avenues to create better citizens in a better world. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number three?
Good evening. My name is Noah. I'm a mother of three amazing kids. I'm Israeli. When I sent my kids to school on Monday, October 8th, after that horrible weekend that chuttered our hearts, I was filled with a deep sense of fear that I hadn't experienced for a long time. It wasn't based on a specific threat. It was a profound notion that I carry with me, the fear that was dormant for a while. It was the awakening pain caused by antisemitism. My grandparents were Holocaust survivors. As Israelis and Jews, we all grew up with our ancestors' stories, nightmares. When I was a small girl, I was very afraid. I've been told that the horrors that my grandparents endured belonged to the past, to an evil world that has long gone. But I was still afraid, because I already knew that monsters do exist, monsters in the shape of human beings. And this, it happened again, now in our world. It happened, and it shook up our whole existence in the most devastating way. It woke up all our fears, all the demons, this ugly generational trauma that was curled up, tucked tightly, in each and every one of us. I have a wish that my kids would grow up without this deep fear and without the knowledge about the human monsters. As a volunteer, our docent, for the past three years, I've been a part of the school community and felt my children were treated fairly. However, recent events have made me fearful for their safety. I've seen pro-Palestinian demonstrations, violent gatherings, and hate-filled chants. I've witnessed antisemitic posts on social media, and it terrifies Israeli mothers like me. How can anyone tolerate this? Will one tolerate a KKK parade or demonstration? This isn't about politics. It's a battle of good versus evil, of decent human beings against human monsters. It all starts with education. From a young age, proper education can guide individuals away from hate, violence, and supporting terror. I implore the Board members to speak out against the crimes of Hamas and antisemitism. Your silence speaks loudly. If the President did this on a global stage, I believe you can do the same here, in our schools. As a mother, I ask for a promise of my kids' safety in school. I request that our schools educate against racism and antisemitism from a young age. We should aim for a community where no one, regardless of age, dares to demonstrate negative behavior, speech, or violence against any group. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number four?
My name is Yavran. I'm an Israeli. I'm a resident of Woodinville. I would like to talk to you about ensuring the safety and well-being of our students. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, it is crucial that we prioritize safety and well-being of our students, including those from Jewish and Israeli community. I would like to begin with a personal story that illustrates the importance of safety and well-being policies. Just last week, my daughter attended school and felt compelled to avoid wearing a shirt adorned with Hebrew letters at her own school out of fear of drawing attention. These incidents reflect a genuine concern we currently face. While thankfully, Noah materialized into actual incidents, it is clear that my child's innate sense of safety has deniably been shaken. We have failed to create safe heaven for students from Jewish community. This highlights an urgency of our mission to improve the NSD policies and practices. We must act now before this issue has a chance to grow. What I expect the Board to do about this is the following. One, transparency and safety. To install confidence within our community, we must provide clear information about the safety measures that have been placed when threats are arised. Two, antisemitism education. I request you to immediately incorporate programs on antisemitism into NSD curriculum. Quite prejudiced, and it's crucial that our students understand the history and consequences of antisemitism. Three, policy development. To combat hate incidents and bullying rooted in racial backgrounds, it is essential to develop comprehensive policy, basically be ready and anticipate events, not just respond. Four, employee accountability. Set a clear precedent with NSD community that any form of support for terror organizations or hate promotion will not be tolerated among NSD staff. To uphold the integrity of our education system, the Board needs to establish a disciplinary hearing process for employees found engaging in such activities and extract them out of the system. It is our collective responsibility to ensure that those responsible for raising our children uphold the highest value of tolerance, respect, and safety. Thank you for your attention and dedication to this important case for our children.
Thank you. Speaker number five?
Hi. My name is Anne Stride. I am the... I'm getting over a cold. I'm the mother of two graduates from North Shore, and I am a former employee. And before I start my talk, I want to just stand in support of the speakers that we just had. We were all horrified by what has just happened. There is no place for antisemitism in this country anymore. And we're just very sorry for the pain that they feel and all the people in Israel have experienced. Okay. All right. Pull myself together. And first, I'd like to commend the district for their transparency in warning parents that when their children were going to be subjected to the Washington Healthy Youth Survey. And I also understand at least one school had the opt-out forms available on the desk. And maybe they all did. I don't know. I don't get out to the schools very often, but I really like to hear that. But I do think it's incumbent on all the parents to consider opting their children out of these surveys, Washington Health Youth Survey, the SEL surveys, or invasive surveys of any kind. And I just wanted to go over a couple of the concerns. The Washington Health Youth Survey, which anybody can get a copy of, it purports to be anonymous, but the first 12 questions are demographic data which could easily identify an individual child. And there are many more questions like that that are scattered throughout the survey. It's likely that most, if not all, students could be identified as individuals. Now, why is this important? Because without the benefit of legal representation or the presence of parents, they are being asked multiple questions on illegal behaviors such as smoking, alcohol, and illegal drug use. They've been asked about bringing weapons to school. They've been asked if they have seriously considered suicide. They've been asked if they have seriously considered suicide. Now, we want to identify those kids and get them the help they need, but remember, this is an anonymous survey, so they're not seeking to get a vulnerable student help. Well, what are they seeking? The goal is to gather evidence to make decisions about programs, and why is that a problem? The multi-tiered support system that I worked with when I was here was, is being used now, the triangular thing, is, it used to be identifying students that were at risk and students that needed help or were getting help. Now, all students are being identified as being at risk. The data is viewed not through an academic lens, but an equity lens. And this data, then, is just used to justify non-academic programs such as mental health services. Now, my question is, when are we going to return the conversation to academics? And these are numbers that I go back to over and over. Parents overwhelmingly want their children proficient in academics. Here's the Washington State figures. Fifty percent of our kids meet ELA standards, less than 40% meet math standards, and only 42% meet science standard.
Anne, I hate to interrupt, but you are over time. If you could wrap it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I will bring these another time. So, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. I do have information on how you can opt out. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Speaker number six.
My name is Anna Venstein. I'm a mom of three Jewish Israeli kids in NSD schools. I would like to share my personal heavy feelings and fears. We are terrified. We are scared. I was born in Soviet Union. It was one of the most antisemitic countries where hate towards Jewish was systemic. It was expressed as irregular daily hate speech, discrimination, or just being scapegoated. Then you can blame for, been blamed for everything. It was absolutely normal for people to discuss the shape of my nose or my mom's Asian looks. However, I was stolen because I'm too pale compared to my mom. I could have been approached by people on the street and received remarks, being asked if we drink baby's blood. It was absolutely terrifying to grow up as a Jewish girl, and I remember that feeling, that fear with every vein in my body. I was taught to be silent, just like my Holocaust grandmother, Holocaust survivor grandmother was silent, just like my great-grandfather was silent after surviving the plague. We were quiet Jews. And here we are, 30 years later, in land of the free, two-week after-hadness massacre of 1,500 Israeli citizens. I feel the same fear. Monday morning after attack, when we had a better understanding of the size of a tragedy, we were alone with our children, preparing them for the school and guiding them on what to do if someone were hateful towards them. Thank God, it didn't happen to my children. We asked them not to watch news or social media in order not to see how much hate has been poured on Jewish people, but news about hateful rallies still reached my older children. After a threat on global jihad, I became fearful on sending my children to school. I found myself making calls to the school, the police, and desperately searching for someone to reassure me that my children will be safe. My doctor was afraid to go to school because he appears might hate her for being Jewish and Israeli. It's disturbing that school district hasn't been able to condemn terrorist attack against the Jewish people. Unfortunately, the atmosphere is not new to me. I want to raise my children without fears I had because we are Jewish. I want any children to be raised with no fear of who they are. The hate speech that you can hear from the media and people's ignorance will eventually escalate the violence. It already has. If you think it won't affect you, then you should start thinking more realistically. It will start with Jewish people and will affect soon other minorities along with everybody else. I'm asking you, the school board, please teach children to defer between hate speech and free speech. Please educate children about antisemitism. As it's the oldest hate in the world, please educate NSD kids on Holocaust. There are so many Holocaust deniers. Please educate their children before we'll become hateful college students. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker seven.
My name is Amy Bearman. I have two children, one a graduate of the Englemore IB program. I have volunteered in this district for years, working for the betterment of all children. It is almost impossible to explain how difficult it is to speak to you because the profundity of the lack of this district's obvious concern, consideration, and understanding for Israeli and other Jewish children. We who find ourselves in this position in our hour of need, who care about the struggles of all children, we find this unfathomable. Following the worst terror attack against Jews literally since the Holocaust, now 1,400 and counting of my people savagely murdered, over 200 kidnapped, including babies, elderly people, the infirm, the disabled, not that any of that ought to matter, why should I be standing here imploring you to care about our humanity? After Hamas brutally stalked and murdered entire families in their homes and at a music festival, our families, our friends, our relatives, on October 9th, we read the superintendent's statement offering support for, quote, "many families and staff with deep ties and connection to Israel, the Gaza Strip, the West Bank, and the surrounding region," unquote. The Gaza Strip? The West Bank? The surrounding region? This along with general statements about inclusion and care and support, and as a specifically thoughtless addendum in the same newsletter, refusing to name terrorism in Israel against Jews, as if it wasn't already minimizing enough, then we read about the great turnout for National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month, and about today's Indigenous People Day, and oh, let's wish our fantastic principals a fantastic happy month. I urge you to feel into this. Imagine it was your family, your cousin, your mother, your best friend's child. This community, my community, is heartbroken, experiencing the worst suffering imaginable, and we have to explain this to you? You're supposed to support all children, not just give lip service to doing so. Listen to us. Listen to our concerns. We ought not have to beg for the dignity of our lives and for our children's safety. Do better.
That's the end of our public comment sign-up. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published? Still moved.
A second.
Comments, questions? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is action items.
President McGordy, for a quick minute, just to help explain, as President McGordy read in the beginning of the meeting, the Open Public Meetings Act actually guides a lot of how we have to conduct our meeting here. It's part of that law, which is the Washington State, it's kind of nicknamed a sunshine law. What it does is it says that within a formal meeting of the board, whenever there's a majority of the board present, that we have to pre-publish agendas so the community knows what we're discussing and doing business on. What that means is we welcome and really treasure public comment, but it's not part of the business part of the meeting according to the law, which means we don't interact over it. So, this is the part of the meeting where we go forth and do the business of the district. I thought it might be helpful to have a little explanation of that. It's a technical aspect of how we do our meeting here, but it's not meant to convey that we haven't heard the public comment, but it's just how we have to operate the meeting like President McGordy explained. So, I just thought it would be helpful. We also totally understand if people have their families at home, if they prefer to step out during our work here, that's totally understandable, but just wanted to explain that a little bit. So, thank you, President McGordy.
Thank you, Director Cast. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Action items. First up is the 2023-2024 Schools Strategic Action Plans. Superintendent Tully.
Thank you, President McGordy. As you know, each year, our schools develop and implement school-level strategic action plans, also known as school improvement plans. The purpose of these plans are to document each school's and district's plan of action for the current school year, more specifically identifies the area each school plans to focus on during the school year, the performance goals for students to achieve. The expectation for each school's goals and efforts have been synthesized into easy-to-read documents that cover all of the different areas on which the school is required to report. According to state law, the school board must review and approve these plans each year. I know that each of you have had an opportunity to review the plans, as well as the School Level Strategic Action Plan Development Handbook that we provided several weeks ago. It is recommended that the school board approve North Shore School District's action plans for each of our schools for the 2023-2024 school year.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Just appreciate Superintendent Tully, the information you forwarded describing the process of creating, reviewing, and continuously updating the strategic action plans at the school. So, thank you. That was important background to this action item.
Also, just that I appreciate that there's a template, and so all the schools are working with the same information and reporting it in similar ways, which makes, I think, it much more efficient to digest the information and make it actionable. So, thank you.
And I'll just add my big thanks to all of the staff who put so much work into this. I mean, it's just tremendous work and representation of all the programs and the focus on the students that evident in the SAPs. I would also like to express appreciation for the consistent format and the school's specific details that are spelled out in each of the individual categories. It's greatly appreciated. Okay, there's nothing else. Do I hear a motion to approve the strategic action plans? Still moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further questions, I will call for the vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next action item is donation from Woodinville High School Girls Basketball Booster to Woodinville High School Girls Basketball. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGordy. This donation totals $11,000, provided by the Woodinville High School Girls Basketball Booster Club to the Woodinville High School. The donation will be used to cover the cost of round-trip fare for the team to go to a tournament in San Diego from December 26th through December 31st. We do recommend that the school board approve the donation totaling $11,000 to the Woodinville High School Girls Basketball Team.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Appreciate our community continuing to support our students and their excellent endeavors.
Indeed. Okay, there's nothing else. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the monitoring report for Superintendent Parameter Nine Equity. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGordy. This, of course, is the parameter that addresses the school district's effort to promote equity as well as racial and educational justice. Board members participated in a very thoughtful and thorough study session regarding Parameter Nine earlier this evening. I know that each of you have had an opportunity to review and study the report as well. I would like to thank Interim Executive Director Avi Thomas, Specialist Rena Harb, Chief Leadership and Strategy Officer Dr. Tracy Malloy, Assistant Superintendent David Wellington, as well as Assistant Superintendent Melissa Riley, Community Partner Researcher Caleb Sinclair, as well as two of our students, Ethan and Samir T., for their assistance in the parameter presentation earlier this evening. Achieving racial and educational justice in North Shore School District is our collective moral pursuit. So, at this time, I hereby present the monitoring report on Superintendent Parameter Nine Equity in accordance with the monitoring schedule set forth by board policy, and I certify that the information contained in the report is true as of today, October 23rd, 2023. We are happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Any comments?
Well, we just had a study session. We had, I won't say ample, but we had opportunity to ask our questions. I got to squeeze all mine in. Everybody was very kind to let me go first. So, I will just focus on some expressions of gratitude of work that has been done over the last year. As always, this is a policy that was not written by the board, but by our community, and so keeping that centered in the work, that it is the community's work, I am so grateful. And hearing that half of the Racial Educational Justice Committee is now made up of students, really just so grateful for that continued focus on it being reflective of the people for whom the work is being done. As always, the middle school novels. And given what we've just heard during public comment, I really, really encourage our community to look at the middle school novels that have just been adopted and the work that they're doing. We brought the Holocaust Center in to guide our staff on how to have those difficult conversations in our classrooms so that, just a snippet of the amazing work that is being done. And I was looking for it because it was mentioned, but just a shout-out to the LGBTQ type alphabet work that is being done, just again, continuous reading of those are the students that are struggling the most, mental health-wise, at a level higher than any other demographic. And so, really appreciate that we are putting some focus into taking care of those students. And then my last thought, and is this really a question for the board? In the paragraph where it talks about our land acknowledgement, it says moving, it talks about trying to move beyond words and a statement. So, maybe as a board, we think about what work we want to do to gain further understanding, whether it's a study session on the time immemorial curriculum, understanding of it being implemented, how it's being implemented in our schools. Is it being implemented with fidelity? Do we know that all classrooms are actually using it? Right, some, maybe, just so, just some, I'm just spitballing, but that's what I was thinking just off a brief conversation President McGordy and I just had of how to take that work for us. brief conversation President McGordy and I just had of how to take that work for us as a board to the next level.
Thank you.
Thank you, President McGordy. So again, a very thorough presentation, all kinds of great information that was shared in the report as well as the study session this evening. One of the things that jumps out about this work is how it's so genuine in its desire to make improvements at the student level, the classroom level, and the community level, and how even one year to the next, how things are evolving to incorporate more student and family voice and and feedback. As Ethan said, you know, his voice is giving him a sense of freedom, you know, to be able to be himself and speak up for himself and his peers. So that's been really inspiring to see this, all this work happening in such a short amount of time. And as we saw, you know, in in events in the world now, sometime in the past, public comments tonight, there is such a great need for this kind of education exposure, place for our students to have these kind of opportunities to dialogue, learn about and learn from one another. And it just feels like this work couldn't be any more important. So I just want to acknowledge what's been done and also compliment the district for being a leader in this in this work regionally and nationally. It's critical, so thank you.
Superintendent Tully, and to the team, thank you for putting together such a detailed report as well as the study session we were just able to have in order to have conversation over the details. When this superintendent parameter was created, the the text was taken directly from what is currently called our titled our Equity Policies Zero 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 One. Like Director Hayes mentioned, it came from the community, this language, and it's incumbent on us as stewards of the community and and their aspirations for our children in order to take that work and keep moving it forward. As such, it is an inspirational parameter. A lot of our parameters are very operational in nature, logistical in nature, not all of them, but most of them. Well, this one we've always acknowledged is not. And I appreciate the sometimes spoken, sometimes unspoken humility in that. And that, yes, here are, here's a sixteen-page report of multifaceted work, multimodal work that we are doing in order to ensure we do right by each and every student in our district. And yet we always acknowledge we will not ever get to a finish line. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that this document structures that are in place. Like my colleagues were just mentioning, both examples of as well as the as well as the, again, the aspirational work needed to have a foundation in place in order to support our students and staff and families and the entire community during heartbreaking times. So thank you for stewarding the work. Thank you to everyone stewarding this work. I look forward to us to continue to improve our practice in it as we always do. So thank you.
I can't add too much to that. The work is amazing since I've been on the board and it started six plus years ago. It's amazing to see from a blank piece of paper and how many pages are filled now of all the faceted, different facets of the work, both inside the classroom, outside the classroom, with teachers, with students. So I I can't give it, I can't give it enough praise and appreciate you and the staff continuing this work. It's very exciting to hear about students being more involved in the committee. And I think, you know, just reflecting on the public comments and other things that go on in our community and the world, just keeping kids involved in this at every level. We'll keep the dialogue fresh and we'll keep it moving, you know, with with the times. And I think, you know, I hope I know there's discussions about ethnic studies and trying to make that graduation requirement. I hope we continue discussing that work going forward.
First, thank you to my colleagues for reading all my comments for me. I agree with everything that's been said. And thank you, Director Hayes, for commenting on the the land acknowledgement. My head was kind of trying to work in the same direction, so we're onto something there. I'm I'm really proud of what this district has accomplished in racial and educational justice. And I must say particularly under the leadership of Superintendent Tully. I really see great things coming ahead of us as well. Couple of small things. You mentioned on page four of the report, staff have an opportunity to engage in professional learning. But and I don't expect, you know, responses right right now, but I was just wondering about the requirements for that. How how much staff are able to or have been, you know, participated in in that learning? And then comments already been made about our our student voice, particularly on this on this committee. But then again, on page twelve, you come, you made, there's a listing there about the the new, the launching of the Family Engagement Resource Center. And I just wanted to say, I think you undersell that. You could have put a whole page of it in there, and I would have been perfectly happy with it. I just think it's such a terrific resource for our community and greatly appreciated. And that's my comments. Anything else? Okay, in which case, for this particular parameter, our options are to find that the superintendent is in compliance with Parameter P nine Equity or making adequate progress toward compliance or not in compliance. Do I hear a motion? So moved.
Oh, right. Sorry.
I give you choices.
I know. I I move that we find Superintendent Tully in compliance with P nine.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. No other further comments or questions? Then completely called for a vote. And we will take a few moments to fill out our our sheets as we go, so we may be quiet for a while. Savor it while you can. That passes unanimously. We find Superintendent Tully in compliance with Parameter P nine. Okay, if everybody is done, next up on the agenda is the review of Superintendent Parameter Nine Equity. And we have just gone through the study session where we discussed the parameter. We certainly, there is a proposal for changing the title of this parameter. Superintendent Tully.
So if you recall, our discussion was that we would update, review, and approve Policy Zero 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 One first, and based on that revisions, that that would then inform Parameter Nine adjust, edits or adjustments.
Absolutely, and that is in process.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody need to comment or question about P nine? Okay, good. All right. Next on the agenda is information items. The one item is project acceptance under one million dollars. Superintendent Tully.
Thank you, President McGordy. There are three projects under a million dollars that were completed during this reporting period. These included the annual required fire alarm testing, regular inspection and maintenance of septic systems, and the annual elevator maintenance.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Actually, I do. And first of all, I'm so glad we're talking about septic systems. It's been a long time since we've had this conversation. I am assuming that this is coming out of capital, the maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not considered operating costs to run our sewer, our septic systems?
So Executive Director Dree Ralph is coming up to respond to this question.
Two or questions, so I know I'm up. So ultimately, it will come out of operating funds because we transitioned the building from a capital to operating funds. So I believe that this is part of that maintenance that is a yearly ongoing maintenance cost.
Okay. So I don't know whether this falls in your department or Assistant Superintendent Burgie's department, but I'm curious because we know this is a battle with our counties and the UGA and this particularly school, we can't hook up to the sewer for schools that are close to the UGA but on the other side of it. So I'm, I think it would be helpful for us to advocate if there is a difference in costs of operating septic system versus being connected, whatever the sewer fee is that we pay.
Right, so there are significant ongoing utility costs to run and pay for sewer systems. And some of our schools that are within UGAs are still not, the sewer systems don't necessarily run to those campuses necessarily. So it just depends on where the jurisdictions have developed and have not developed their sewer systems. But I can definitely look into what the numbers are as far as utilities. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, I didn't, I did not expect you to have that on the top of your head. Yeah, I just, it would, I think it would be helpful for us again, as we are diving very deeply into our budget, if there is a difference, a substantial difference. If it's not substantial, that's fair. But if there's a substantial difference in cost between septic systems, and we can discuss later having a septic system at middle schools, but and then versus being able to connect to the sewer system, I think that would be helpful for us working with our cities and counties.
I I just have to comment, leave everything, no, you you may go sit down, just everything will be left to Executive Director Ralph. But having recently dealt with a septic system, my understanding is that having a septic system is actually less expensive than the ongoing fee for a sewer link. It has to depend on city, I'm I'm assuming, and the size and complexity of your septic tank. But definitely something that we should become better informed about.
We haven't talked
Like it or not.
So long.
Okay, other questions? That was, okay. That's it for the information item. Next up is board reports and communication. First up is new business, any new business? Okay, I do have one. I just wanted to point out that the board will soon have a small little blip in the weekly connections newsletter, which goes out on Mondays where she gets, she's over there. So there is, I think we all received a draft of what's going out today. So if you, anyone has ideas or other things that you feel should go into it, please contact myself, more importantly, contact Executive, excuse me, Director Campbell, and let her know about that because she's the one who who's putting this together. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it for new business. Next up is board member reports. First up this evening is Director Cast.
Thanks, President McGordy. So a couple things. So first of all, thank you to Principal White and everyone at East Ridge. It was lovely to do a school visit on October tenth to see wonderful East Ridge. On October seventeenth, appreciated doing a joint meeting with the North Shore Council PTSA as we discussed important topics such as our budget, our budget process going forward as we deal with the funding shortfall, as well as talking about the impact of artificial intelligence, at least just on schools, because the impact is wide enough. We don't have to worry too much about that luckily. But October eighteenth also appreciated the chance to stop by at least for a part of the Listen and Learn with Muslim Families with Superintendent Tully. Appreciated the opportunity, of course, to interact with families from the community. October nineteenth, Director Hayes and I had an opportunity to attend a summit for civic health that was organized by, I think, he, the Lieutenant Governor Denny Heck came up with an idea, and the Evan School from UW helped him organize pulling together leaders from across the state, both school born, we ran into a whole bunch of school born members, city council members, the leadership from Central Cultural de Mexicano was there. So a wide range of people who devoted the day to talking about how to increase civic health within our states. It was inspirational and I really appreciated it, as well as had opportunities over the past two weeks to have meetings with community members and attend a football game. And lastly, today, I had an opportunity to take a tour of Innovation Lab, Innovation Lab High School with Principal Rodriguez, as well as representatives from the State Board of Education and Mastery Transit Consortium and Regional Assistant Superintendent Dunham was able to come to talk about the continued support of the important work at Innovation Lab. It was a lovely visit. So thank you.
Fabulous. Next up is Director Hayes.
Okay, that'd be a bit repetitive. Again, thank you to Principal White and all the students and staff at East Ridge Elementary for a great visit. Always love seeing the amazing work that is happening there. A week ago Monday, I hosted along with the State School Board Association meeting, a joint meeting with the at least forty other districts that are being negatively impacted by the FCC Emergency Connectivity Grant Audit to try to bring together all the parties impacted to start having a conversation and get us in alignment as we try to assess what can be done to prevent against some of the harms that will happen from that and messaging out to community of what actually happened. It was a good meeting and people were, we were appreciative, and so there'll be more to come on that. A huge shout out and thank you to our North Shore PTSA Council for attending our meeting last week. We know that was a bit last minute, but we really value their input and partnering with us as we figure out our financial status for next year and how we are going to work to keep North Shore strong and that we will get through this, but it's going to take all of us pulling together. So we really, really thank them for that. Just ditto in attendance with the Project for Civil Health that was hosted by Lieutenant Governor Denny Heck. Again, just a really great opportunity to start the conversation of how do we bring civil discourse into our conversations around politics and government and what can be done. Also attended the tour of Innovation Lab, so thank you to Principal Rodriguez for hosting and showing off the great work. We saw maggots and Shakespeare, so I was very happy. And then I did attend the Virtual State PTA Legislative Assembly this weekend. Some really great work being done, really appreciate their their voice for our students and their needs. So it was an interesting event, we'll believe it there. And then I it there. And then I have continued my meetings with schoolborne members from around the state and the country.
There you go. Next up, Director Cogan.
Thank you, President McGordy. On the 10th, Tuesday, thoroughly enjoyed our first school visit of the year at East Ridge Elementary School, and it was really lovely to get to visit some really impressive classrooms. They were so welcoming and the lessons so rich. It really made my day, so that was fabulous visit. And then on Thursday, the 12th, I joined here at the boardroom, or at the building, excuse me, the admin building at the North Shore Schools Foundation's in-person meeting. And so at the meeting, they inducted three new board members, so I wanted to thank the new members and wanted to acknowledge that we're looking forward to their talents and energies and support of kids in our community. Thank you for joining the foundation, school board, excuse me, foundation board. And then also, after we had our meeting, I wanted to thank Kerry Campbell and Shrinivas Kadim for inviting the North Shore School Foundation Board down to the Family Engagement Resource Center to take a tour and go over the details of the services offered and some stories about some of the students and families that have been supported with the new center. So thank you very much.
Very good. Director Swain?
On the 17th, I was also here with you all at the North Shore Council PTSA meeting, which I thought was really productive. And I know we were, made a big transition from budget to AI, and then we were all kind of pleasantly surprised at how great that conversation was as well. Appreciate the PTSA for showing up in such great numbers and for asking some very good questions. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you all. For my report, I also attended the East Ridge School Visit. Just so amazing to get back at it. The first one of the year is just always such a treat. Have a chance to chat with students face to face, and I'm happy to report that they are more than willing to tell us what they like and what they don't like and would like us to change, which is also a really good thing. I also attended the WAZDA networking call on Thursday, the 12th, as well as the statewide telecon to discuss the ongoing SAO issue on October 16th. Also, I called into the PTSA Online Gun Safety Event on October 16th, and it was just a fabulous event. So thank you all for putting that on. Also attended the conversations with the board nominally with the PTSA Council, which I thought was really productive. Some great, some great input and great discussions around both the budget and AI. October 18th, we had lunch with some folks, and then the Listen and Learn with Our Muslim Community, which was just incredibly well-attended. I was able to stay pretty much till the end. Just such thoughtful, positive community discussions. So congratulations to Dr. Kedem and the team who put this on. It was, it was a terrific event. And that's me. So unless there are other comments, and we could drag it out a little bit longer, or not, meeting is adjourned.